Welcome to another week of Thursday weekly study session where aspiring commit to you beginner commit to you and initiated commit to you can all come, study, learn, and converse just about the different issues, things that are going on as well as the study materials. So picking up where we were last week, we are still reading Ancient Egypt and Black Africa. We are still on the second chapter, but again, just as a reminder for the new folks who might be watching, this is the first two chapters are really, really long. So hopefully the goal is for today to finish the second chapter so that we can put some pedal to the metal. Alright, so we are going to start with Pythagoras of Samos studied twenty-two years in Kemett. So essentially, just for a little bit of back backdrop, a lot of what Obenga is doing in this second chapter is really just kind of talking about how essentially a lot of Greek things and a lot of within European scholarship, how certain cultural, philosophical, mathematical, astrological, like all of that stuff kind of goes back to classical Greece. And he's essentially just making the case and saying like, hey, but they got it from ancient Kemett. So you know, this assumption of them being the light and you know, and purveyor of all of these different things isn't really accurate simply because they got it from someplace else and they just kind of repackaged it, remixed it for, you know, their own kind of needs. So he, the last thing that we read was talking about like mathematics specifically. So hence why we're starting with Pythagoras this week. So dying in five twenty-two BCE, Polycrates was a tyrant of Samos, a Greek island in the Aegean Sea from five thirty-three to five twenty-two. He attracted artists and writers to his court. Among them, like different lyric poets came under his, you know, court and things like that. Now, mind you, and again, if you're new, that's just to kind of clue you in. This book was written in nineteen, I want to say ninety-two or is it ninety-four? Cause I want to make sure I'm correct, I'm not saying the wrong thing. It was written in nineteen ninety-two. So for some of this information, it's not necessarily that it's dated, but it's more like we kind of in twenty twenty-one, we, we already kind of understand like that these are just things we already know for the most part, like they're just known. So, but he really just tries to be very, very detailed. So there are some parts where I'm gonna just kind of summarize and move on. So, so the king Amasis, king of the Kometiou twenty-sixth dynasty reigned from five seventy to five twenty-six BCE. And Pythagoras therefore went to Kemett around five fifty-eight BCE. Five fifty A B C E, having provided with a letter of recommendation from Polycrates to hand to Amasis. So there is a biography that pretty much goes on to say that Pythagoras stayed for twenty-two years in comedic temples, learning astronomy, geometry, being initiated to all the different ceremonies of the Neteru or the corresponding Neteru. At Heliopolis, Pythagoras received lessons from comedic priests. See, and again, this is the part that I'm just like, oh, why can't he just give us the indigenous name instead of the Greek name? But I digress. From the comedic priests, Onif, Oni, no, Oe Nufus. So this is the Greek version. Oh, no, my bad. I spoke too soon. So he says, Onifus is the Greek version of the comedic name Wennefer, the good being, one of Assar's names. So essentially, one of these priests was, you know, one of the epithets of Assar, he was named after him. So the different forms of comedic writing in Kemett, Pythagoras associated with priests learned from their wisdom and also the comedic language. On the one hand and on the other three types of writing, oh Lord have mercy. Epistol, I'm gonna say this real slow. Epistolographic, hieroglyphic and symbolic. And then he gives a source that like to, like a biography on Pythagoras where he got that from. So the word that I just tried to say and I'm gonna try one more time. Epistolographic, ooh, go me, second times the charm. So that kind of writing corresponds to Demotic writing. So if you're not familiar, you have like the classic Old Kingdom writing. Then that goes on until about the Middle Kingdom where it was like refined. And that's mostly like most of the hieroglyphic or Seshmeru nature. Most of like what we see is based on that time period's way of writing. And then Demotic kind of started coming a little bit more like towards the end of the Middle Kingdom and then intermediary, blah, blah, blah. And then, then we got Coptic at the end, which was essentially once the New Kingdom came, the New Kingdom was pretty much run by Greeks that were left over after Alexander the Great. And so essentially the language started incorporating and the culture started incorporating way more Greekisms and ways of doing stuff. So Coptic is essentially using a lot of Greek letters instead of like the Seshmeru nature or like the traditional type of glyphs. So just so we know. So that's pretty much the last, what do you call that? The last version of the comedic language, written language before it kind of got way more mixed into, you know, other outside system or cultures would be the better way of saying it. So, so this type of writing, the epistolographic writing corresponds to Demotic writing and symbolic to Hieratic. So Hieratic is like that old school way of writing. Indeed, Porfri is correct. So that's the, the person who wrote the biography. So he's going back and he's like, yeah, he's correct because there are three different kinds of graphic signs which correctly form Pharaonic comedic language. So let us quickly review Greek testimonies, which inform us on the knowledge acquired by Pythagoras in the Happy Valley, also known as the Nile. So he gives the testimony of Herodotus, which came out in four eighty-four BCE to four twenty BCE. So just in general, as a side note, I do have like a lot of digital eBooks and PDF books and things like that. So one of the books I made sure that I downloaded was Herodotus's. I forget what the name of it is, like Historae or I forget how to say it like in the Greek. But, or with like the accents and stuff like that. But that is definitely a book, like if you ever really want to see from ancient, even though it's like from foreign perspective, it is interesting to kind of see that way of hearing what the ancient commit to you were like versus modern Egyptologists. But again, it's still like an outsider's way of looking at stuff. So I will be having that specifically in my online store. So I mean, you know, just to kind of like make it available because I just, again, I've said this before, I just feel like everybody's kind of reading a whole bunch of different stuff. So we could just kind of come together and be like, hey, what about this? What about that? You know, again, that's part of like this platform of just like, let's all read kind of the same thing and chew it apart and decide what we want to keep, what we don't want to keep, what's important, what's not important and so on and so forth. So, so he goes on with the testimony of Herodotus. And then he goes on with the testimony of Isocrates from four thirty-six to three thirty, thank you people, three thirty A B C E. Then he goes on with Plutarch from fifty to one twenty-five C E. And again, as I said before, he just is going on about how all these people went down there and they were taught by these different comedic priests. He goes on with the testimony of Porfiri, two thirty-four B C, I'm sorry, two thirty-four C E to three oh five C E. More just saying, yeah, that he, that Pythagoras knew comedic philosophy from within and he studied. So essentially he's just kind of putting that all together. Oh my gosh, he really goes in with this. The central idea of Pythagorean arithmetic is that everything is a number. Everything is explained by number and to know is in the end to determine and interpret numerical relations. Numbers are the sovereign orders of the cosmos and Pythagoras and Pythagoreans rational speculation to mysticism is linked. Actually, in ancient Kemik, the notion of cosmic harmony, AKA Maat, is absolutely fundamental. This cosmic harmony is reflected in the harmonizing of the universe, temple and man. Thus, the central idea of the initiatory pedagogy conveyed by Pythagoreanism originates in Kemett. Like literally that sums up, like he gives all this evidence, like this dude says this, this dude says this, this dude says this. And they said how this happened and this happened and this happens. He's just kind of weaving it all together. So in summary, look, I got to save us some pages here. So in summary, Pythagoras studied in Kemett for twenty-two years in Heliopolis, Memphis and Thebes. His teacher in Heliopolis was, what is it, Wennefer? In Kemett, Pythagoras learned the comedic language, writing, geometry, philosophy, wisdom, mysteries and notion of the power of numbers, music and astronomy. Pythagoras underwent ritual, oh wow, okay. Pythagoras underwent ritual circumcision in Egypt, in Kemett, sorry, in order to be admitted into the temples to learn astronomy, geometry and so on and so forth. This is well and truly the circumcision of some African rituals, a significant trait of the cultural identity of black peoples. This cultural similarity between the Happy Valley and the rest of Black Africa is not only obvious when it comes to this fact, but also to the terms to demonstrate this, he says, Phara, Pharaonic, hello, I'm adding letters in there. Pharaonic, Ronnie Kemett, I'll put it like that. So Sekem Sab or Sebi to circumcise, Coptic Sebi to circumcise. For, for Keek Congo from the Bantu of Central Africa, you've got Seba to circumcise, to cut, to wound lightly with a knife. Bemba from Bantu Zambia, Kuseba, Seba to cut grass. And then Arabic or Semitic, Hatana to circumcise. So I'm not quite sure why he would add Arabic and Semitic in there, even though Ronnie Kemik is like a Semitic language or partially a Semitic language. So I guess that's maybe where he's going with that. So in Kemett, the verb Sab or Sebi to circumcise had ritual meaning. And circumcision was practiced in a group when I was circumcised with a hundred and twenty men. Wow, that's a lot of cutting in one day. Which one can read on the stela of Hanutsen from the first intermediate period from twenty-one ninety to twenty fifty B C E. This compares with identical age group circumcision in Black Africa. So Pythagoras's doctrine founded on the knowledge of numbers and on the meaning of the universe harmony, experienced a long adventure from with his immediate disciples. And he names a whole bunch of folks, there's a lot of people. Then Pythagorean, then Pythagoreanism reached Rome towards the end of the fourth century B C E and found fever. And then he pretty much just says how it spread. And the Greeks benefited from the treasures that he learned down in Kemett. And that's essentially that section. So to go back, this idea of circumcision, and I just think it's really, really interesting because you know, growing up in, in other systems and things like that, you know, I'm not even gonna speak for other people, what I was taught. So when I was younger, I was pretty much taught that like the Jewish people and you know, because Jewish Jews came before Christians, you know, like, so we circumcised because God commanded it in the seventh and third. And it's just very, very interesting because it always gave the impression to me that circumcision was not something that was practiced by other peoples around at that time period. So like when I'm sitting here and I'm reading this, I'm like, wow, a hundred and twenty men getting clipped all at once, like, you know, to just be a little crass with it. But I think that's just very, very interesting because, you know, the, the impression that one is given is that it wasn't practiced, you know, like, or to be uncircumcised in general. Like even when we think like worldwide, like generally the Abrahamic faiths are the ones that are kind of known for doing that. So the fact that Obenga is saying that this is a very, very African practice and that that was very prevalent in Kemett. Like I'm like, oh, I feel like that's something that we kind of need to further look into. Because one, again, we are, we are taught, you know, when we are in Christian circles, I guess you'd say, that, you know, this is a command from God. So I wonder, because I've never heard any mythos within the comedic sphere that said like, you know, the Neteru were like, hey, that little extra bit and you know, it's gotta go because I command it. Like, so I wonder kind of how the commit to you either knew, like, I imagine maybe it was for hygiene purposes. But I, I'm just, I guess, a little curious, like, well, where did that come from? And I'm wondering, as far as the time periods, like, is this something that the Jewish people kind of got? Because they were so closely with the commit to you, like in, I want to say in distance, because it's not like they were that, that close, but you know, close enough, like was it outside influence that made them do it? Was it just one of those things? Cause you know, human beings, we can have awesome ideas or realizations or breakthroughs or whatever. We can have them around the same or similar time, but not necessarily get them from another person. So I guess I'm just curious about that, like where did they get that from? Or how did they know and did it influence other groups of people around them? Or maybe they learned it from the other group or something like that. So I think that would be interesting to be nosy about, let's be frank, to just be nosy about. So Plato's Egyptian lesson from four twenty-seven to four forty-seven B C E. So essentially Plato also studied in Kemett. So Hermor, Hermorres, Hermorres? This is why I don't speak Greek. Of Syracuse, a direct disciple of Plato, who was the member of the academy of specialized professor during Plato's last ten years, tells us that at the age of twenty-eight, Plato went to Magara to see Euclid accompanied by a few other pupils of Socrates. Then Plato went to Cyrene to see the mathematician Theodorus and to his home in Italy to Philolaios, to Eurytos, both Pythagoreans, then to Kemett to see the prophets. I want to see if they, if, if he goes into explaining that. So Plato therefore went to study, oh, he went on a study trip to the Happy Valley to be taught by the comedic priests. And this is very precious information because it comes from his immediate disciple when Plato himself was still alive. So Plato studied notably in Heliopolis under the priests Second Nufus and in Memphis under Canufus. And then he gives the reference as to where he's getting that from. Alright, so, oh, this is interesting. Okay, so Plato Egyptianizes words instead of Greekifying them. That's interesting because you know, as he's kind of been saying, like it's usually the other way around. So, so Seis, transcribed by Plato as Seis correspond to the Seshmeru nature Saul, mentioned since the old, I'm sorry, the beginning of the Old Kingdom. Seis or Saul was northeast of Tanta on the delta and the Rosetta branch of the Happy was the important center of the cult of Neith. So Neith transcribed as Neith by Plato corresponds to the comedic Neut, the comedic. That's interesting. The comedic nature, it's called Athena by the Greeks. Like I could see how Neith could be Athena, but I don't see how he got Neut. Cause Neut is, you know, essentially like the divine, one of the divine mother figures. And you know, I understand that Neith has to do with like precision and hunting and, and things like that. And when I, what I do know or remember from what I was taught about Greek mythology, that Athena is about hunting and, and things like that. So I could see how Neith is equivalent, but I don't see where he's getting Neut from. So Teuth of Plato equals Jehudi in comedic and Coptic Taut, Ta't, Ta't. Inventor and divine protector of arts, law, science. This comedic nature was assimilated by Hermes of the Greeks. Plato does not use the word Hermes like other Greek writers, but he does actually say Jehudi or Ta't when he writes as tooth, T H E U T H. So Plato's Thomas, a king who ruled the whole of Kemett and whose capital was in Thebes, city of the nature Amen. Certainly refers to Thutmose in, in comedic Jehudimes, the name of the king of the eighteenth dynasty who made Thebes famous as Amen did for Karnak. So when Plato mentions comedic products, he obviously retains the indigenous words. Kiki or oil corresponds to the Egyptian, oh, I see. So it keeps saying Kiki, it's either K Y K Y K I K I. In Coptic meaning caster or caster oil, the word quote, Ibis is, see, look, is Jehudi sacred bird and obviously a comedic word. Alright, so I'm gonna finish this section at least. So in Phaedrus, we have the series Naucratus and Thebes, Thut and Amen, King Thomas, the sacred bird and the Ibis. In Temmaeus, we have another series, Seis, Neith, King Amasis and the priests of Seis. In the laws, all that is mentioned in the Philibus Thut, one can easily see that Plato has a knowledge of places, natural, men and different symbology. So for Plato, Kemett is a country of earliest antiquity. So in Kemett, since most ancient, since most ancient antiquity, everything was recorded in the temples. So human memory supported by writing and verifiable from written documents themselves is consequently far reaching in the banks of the Happy. Thus, it is that Plato considers Kemett as a comprehensive archaeological reserve of universal history. Kemett is a country of time honored knowledge. So Solon's memory does not go back very far in this side. And then he goes on to say, Solon, Solon, you Greeks are still children and there is no such thing as an old Greek. The Greeks therefore had valid reasons to go and learn ancient knowledge in Kemett. So, so Kemett is the cradle of writing and science. And I'm like, again, now we're getting to the point where it's like, okay, we made that point, we know, we get it. So he's pretty much just talking about the role of Jehudi and how Jehudi is associated with the science of numbers, calculus, geometry, astronomy. Again, backgammon, dice, and finally, and especially writing. So for the Greeks before Socrates's birth, there is no possible doubt that Kemett was indeed in their eyes, the cradle of science, technology, games, writing, and in short, of written and scientific civilization. So for the enlightened Greeks, the antiques of Kemett constitute the very cradle of human civilization, the origin of the whole intellectual, cultural development of humanity around the Mediterranean. So then he goes on, the next section is talking about Egypt. Kemett is a perfect model of artistic and intellectual organization. I kind of feel like this is something I might want to read. Let's find out. So the cultural exception which distinguishes Kemett in the eyes of Plato is that this country is the only one where art is legislated, codified in this way. Art, sculpture, painting, music, dance, etc. can therefore play a legitimately high social and moral function. And thus is petty agogic role is irreplaceable. This attitude emerges clearly from the laws. The beautiful figures and the beautiful melodies are rigorous exemplary models and it is strictly forbidden to revolutionize or to imagine in an unorthodox manner, other models contrary to the ancestral cannons, contrary to Maat. So Plato states a fact that he finds admirable and that is the antiquity of comedic art. Its formula arrangement, its hieratism, its conservationism, its tradition and above all is ontological function. Quote, Plato shows himself as a being immeasurable, Hieratic arts as that which he had admired in the works of the temples of the Happy Valley. This is in fact, a highly philosophical problem. The strict regulation of arts, the calendar established according to the festivals of the Neteru, the consecration of every dance and all music and the comedic educative methods. All these nurtured Plato's politics. So it's like I'm reading this and I'm going in a different direction and feel free to, you know, if you're like, nah, you off. But I just think about, you know, when we think of stereotypes and things like that, we always, not always, but a lot of times, people still look at black people, African people, if we wanted to expand it, people of color. Like we look at the idea of not just entertainment, but as art, as kind of like juvenile, that it's not important, like even if we just look at the education system nowadays, like we, arts always are getting cut. They're always, you know, kind of being put to the wayside because of literacy, whether it be math literacy or something like that. So when we're sitting here and listening to like Plato is sitting here saying like, yo, the commit to you was about the art. And not just the art because it's pretty, it wasn't just decorative, like everything was really interconnected. It was a very holistic way of looking at things. So you know, art was fun, art was expressive, art was all of these different things, but it had a higher function. So I think that's very, very different from what we're used to, especially nowadays. When we look at social media, when we're looking at, I'm like, nobody really watches music videos anymore. But you know, concerts and things like that, like it's all about pleasure, it's all about expression and it's all about emotionality, stuff like that. So I'm wondering as contemporary commit to you, and this isn't a slight on anybody because there are some people trying to make music and, and trying to create art and things like that. But it's, it's usually again, in that vein of, I need to express myself or, oh, this is pretty or something like that. I need to express myself or oh, this is pretty or something like that. It's not with that sacredness behind it. If that makes any sense. So um the part where he says it has a legitimately high social and moral function like. Does our art, sculpture, painting, music, dance? You know, do we have or can we? Put back the high social and moral function, or are we just? Like so much in the West where we are so wrapped up into this uh capitalistic system that. If it doesn't make money, like. You know what I mean? Like it it we we tend to throw things to the side if it's not. Money generating. And while I do totally understand that. You know, money and economics and you know, you don't wanna be, as I say, a poor righteous teacher like. You wanna be righteous, you wanna be a teacher, but. You know, like it it's. Like that attitude of um. Being humble when it comes to money, I I think that's very, very Abrahamic. Way of looking at things like I just don't think that that is a comedic way of looking at things at all cuz again, they had high society where. You know, they collected taxes and they made money and they traded and and did all of those different things. So. Um you know, you just know you don't go too far, be too greedy to. You don't steal stuff from other people and so on and so forth, but. You know, it it's not just about. I don't wanna say having a poverty mindset cuz that's not right, but. It it's just. I don't know, I I I feel like that just too many people still kind of have that going on in their mind. That like I have to be humble, um if it's my art, you know. Cuz a lot of times people do undersell themselves, they undercharge for things and you know, so it it's this, it's a very interesting. Relationship that we have, not just with art, but just also our own economics. Excuse me. And it's very interesting too. I'm like, and and this is like super side note, but the idea of moral function. And I have heard other people within the um comedic community. And they say, oh, you know, black people. Uh don't need more morals, we don't need, you know, we have that. And it's just like, just because. We practice religiosity doesn't necessarily mean we're abiding. By those things, like there, we we're in a society where doing things part time or doing things for appearances is very acceptable. And um. As Kometi you, like we're supposed to constantly be striving for a higher level. So. You know, even with the entertainment, even our entertainment should be higher level, it should like what's that meme? It's like why be a snack when you could be a whole meal? And it's like, but that embodies like that attitude embodies what. Kometi you were really supposed to kind of have that type of attitude. And I know some people even say like, oh. Kometi you are, they're like really conceited, they're um bougie, they're this, they're that, and it's like. I think that that it's worthy of conversation to just be like, okay, well. How can we have this confidence? How can we have this like kind of? Standard for ourselves, um this high standard, which again comes from. Our ancient examples, like our ancient ancestors left these examples of, you know, the heights of the high. So um why, why are we? You know, with our music, with our morals, without, you know, like why are we still? Entertaining certain things as Kometi you. And um why are we not as willing to kind of let it go? I think that would be uh like the follow up, like what what are we doing here? I think I, I think I feel like I ask that almost every week. So um. I got so into, oh, here it goes. Alright, so. I think it's even the the part where he says the beautiful figures and melodies are ri- are rigorous. Exemplary models and is strictly forbidden to revolutionize or imagine in an unorthodox manner. Because again, if everything is related to divine mathematics, if everything is according to Maat and everything has its place. I'm wondering, just as we are reconstructing and and, you know, deconstructing what was. Like how much? We should revolutionize because this is saying revel, like that was strictly forbidden. Like, and I get that, and I think a lot of people might be uncomfortable with that idea. Uh because it can come off as like being controlling, it can come off as being uh. Like you can't grow and you know, it's again, in our society, we 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 have very capitalistic minds. Of like, you know, individualism and rugged individualism and competition and competition being a good thing and this, that and the third. And it's just this idea, well, if it is nature, if it is everything we can see, everything we cannot can. See everything we can, you know, uh if it is everything yet no thing. How can you? How can I say this? You, if you have this abstractness. How can you constantly change? But be in tune. With that larger than you abstract concept. You know what I mean? Cuz cuz we can change ourselves, but. Uh how could I put it in a different way? Gravity is gonna be gravity. You don't need to revolutionize how to deal with gravity. You don't need to revolutionize. How vitamin C is assimilated into the body. There are just some things that no matter how much we wanna change it, no matter how much we don't like it or how much. You know, we perceive or whatever, like it just is. So I think when it comes to morals, when it comes to. Values, when it comes to like our art and having like a higher level of being that um. Part of that needs to be the acceptance that there are just some things like you're just gonna have to. I don't wanna say not have a personal opinion, but understand that it's way bigger than you and. Like you just. Don't need to change it. Some things don't need to be updated. Um but again. As modern practitioners. We need to have some sort of foundation at the same time. So I just think it's it's just a, what do they call that? A big piece of fat to chew on. Um I feel like that's something my mom would say. Yeah, okay, so uh Kemet was the best meth, uh best method to teach math to children. Hmm considering math scores are very low, I want to see where this goes. So in the laws, a work written between three seventy and three forty seven BCE. Plato demonstrates the greatest interest for the comedic pedagogy of mathematics. This is because method is primordial for Plato. It is more dangerous to learn with a bad method than to not know one. Ignorance, even total and profound, in any subject is neither as dangerous nor as greatly harmful. It is much more damaging, on the contrary, to have learned a lot and to know a lot without method. Plato admires the comedic method which teaches mathematics to children as if it were a game. Um and I think that's one thing that's interesting. And yesterday, um I had a live with uh Judith from Rock collage. Uh which is a local um metaphysical crystal, uh spiritual shop here in Jersey. And um we were just talking about like teachers and finding teachers, we were talking about a lot of different things, but. One of the points that I had brought up is this idea that. Uh within the spiritual communities, but more so over because I, you know, I'm more concerned with the comedic community. So. How many people in the comedic community, one are teachers? Or were teachers? But then the people who are doing the teaching do not have that art, meaning. They teach how they were taught. And to an extent, that's okay. Uh but this idea of rope memorization of making flashcards and. You know, memorizing things like that's not really education, that's schooling, that is, you know. A certain way of doing things, but it doesn't stick. So um. And a lot of our teachers at work, they'll be like, oh, my gosh, we're, it's like we're always have to entertain. The students and it's like, no, that's how people learn, like even thinking back to when we're little bitty babies like. That is how we learn, we learn through game, we learn through play. So the fact that Kometi you knew that. Is just, again, it goes in that bucket of, wow, I can't believe like the ancestors were just that. In tune and they just knew. Uh so. It's just so funny where he says ignorance, even total and profound in any subject is neither as dangerous nor greatly. Nor as greatly harmful. It is much more damaging, on the contrary, to have learned a lot and know a lot without method. And uh absolutely um agree with that because. Look at where we are now. Look at how many people are being taught. And you know, sometimes they being taught the wrong thing, like I've heard. And again, I said this yesterday on the other live where I have heard people who are teachers, like they're in charge of people and they're telling like, yeah, you should be drinking. Turpentine and you know, somebody else, oh, you know, just put malachite in your bath water, like malachite is really poisonous. It's a really toxic stone. You shouldn't be doing that, like. But without disclaimers and there are so many people not giving disclaimers and just putting stuff out on the internet, putting stuff in, I wanna say a book, but. I feel like books aren't as dangerous, but they are as dangerous. Because again, nowadays, anybody can publish a book. You don't have to go through a publishing company. You don't have to. You know, meet any certain criteria and you know, I totally get that people are. Don't like conventional education, but that's part of conventional education that. There are just certain things you can't espouse, you can't do because like, you know, you're just dead ass wrong, period. Like you're just wrong or you're misleading or that's misinformation, disinformation or what have you. And um so that's part of the beauty of. Um. Being in academia kind of a thing because outside of it, and it doesn't need to be elitist. Um. But some, like some of these folks that are teaching now and. The information they're giving or they're not giving the full story or they don't continue to do their research, it's kind of like people learn something and then just start. Repeating it over and over again, and they're not open to new information, they're not open to potentially changing or like. Ooh, let me course correct because I have people, you know, coming behind me and that's what um. Plato is saying this idea like, if you learn it wrong, it's way worse. And if you wouldn't like, you know, again, we have a formula for a purpose and a reason, like people have been studying. People, the universe, science, animals, like human beings have been studying things for a very, very long time. So. Why not tap into that wisdom? Like why totally try to reinvent the wheel because you're smarter than every, than thousands and thousands of years of. Of human history, like come on, that's huge ego going on here. And while you may have awesome contributions. It it's like, it's like bad self esteem, like if you've ever met somebody where they're like, yeah, like I'm a queen, I'm a queen, I'm a queen. Or I'm a king, I'm a king, I'm a king, and they don't have their stuff together, like and not in a judgmental way, but like. There's their life be almost in shambles. But they want to, you know, project this bigger than life, higher, you know, holier than thou. Type of thing. And it's just like that kind of person. Is so damaging to other people because now they're they're taking their charisma. And their ego, and it's now superseding the knowledge that's supposed to be um presented. And um like. Michael Judy, I know you've also said, like, you know, sometimes you be listening to people and it just be like, shoot, go over your head kind of a thing. And not in like a negative way, but it's like some people really just do that on purpose, like, oh, I need to sound smart, so. Let me just use a whole bunch of words, let me just this, let me, let me just kind of put a whole bunch of. Uh. Stuck together that I know it'll seem familiar. Or it'll seem like uh relatable, so it sounds like it could be true, but it's it's. A lot of times people get manipulated um. Because of that, because of misinformation, disinformation, just look at, you know, um. Within the United States, how, you know, with these last couple of elections, how other foreign entities can really just. Go on the internet, put out a whole bunch of memes and and get. You know, this part of the population is trying to start a riot, this part of the con, like population is trying to do that, you know, it's like. Pulling, you know, pulling you apart in every um direction. But again, it's literally because. How does he say it? You learn a lot and know a lot, but without method. Like you just. And it's nothing that has to do with intelligence, it's people taking advantage and exploiting and alienating. Uh. For their own gain as opposed to, you know, actually trying to build a higher society or. Trying to build a comedic community or trying to build, you know, whatever, you know, uh subject, cuz we can use this in a lot of different areas. So. Just this idea of we need to get better at educating ourselves. Uh we need to get better at identifying which information may not be conducive for the larger goal. Uh so on and so forth, because again. Ignorance, even total and profound in any subject is neither as dangerous nor as greatly harmful. So and I'll even say this, and this is like. I had to wait for them to get a little further away. So it's it's unfortunate that so many people. Like. Really, really talk horribly about Christianity, about Christians, about all these different things. And I get it, like. Christianity and and other Abrahamic religions and religions, a lot of religions in general. Are responsible for killing people, manipulating people, taking away freedoms, you know, I I get it, I get it. Like. But the. It's just this idea that you're fighting so hard and you want people to stop that system, but then. Just kind of want people to, oh, figure it out, you know, so you wanna take away the structure. But you want peo- likes, but you give people nothing in return. So. That's why it's like, okay, I honestly unpopular opinion, it would be better for some people to stay. As Christians. Only because. It's kind of like uh when they turn eighteen and they just bust out the house and. You know, uh I know someone, when um she went off to college, her parents were super, super strict and. She was, she was going to all these different college parties and this, that and the third. And then got so drunk one day that she fell down and busted out her whole front like teeth. And it's this idea of like, you know, wow, we have freedom, we can do anything, but now that's when we're doing the most salacious, most immoral. You know, kind of behaviors because. You know, we don't have method, we don't have, you know, Maat, Maat is just like out the door. Or morals or values or you know, whatever synonym you would wanna use. So this idea that. How we educate, why our purpose of educating and what it is we're educating, I think it really, really needs to be a conversation. Uh within the community because again, we're just like. Everywhere. We are just everywhere. Um. We only have two more pages. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm like. I got a little too excited. Two more pages in this chapter. I'm so excited, okay. Uh so the most enlightened among the Greeks who studied in Kemet are Solon Thales, Plato. Exodus and Pythagoras. For Plutarch, the uh comedic myth of Assar and Satesh constitutes the historical explanation. Of Plato's doctrine. And Plato, although often expressing himself in an obscure veiled matter. Names one of the opposing principles, the same and the other, the other. And this is from a book, uh Isis and Osiris. Excuse me. And it says three seventy F, I'm not even really sure what that. Quite could mean, but that's what it says. Uh so. Uh Assar is the quote same, the sameness, and Satesh the other, the difference. The origin and composition of the world is the product of a mixture of these two opposing forces. And the best one of the two prevails. Assar is the soul of the world and Satesh is the body of the world. In the soul of the world, intelligence and reason, which is the guide and the sovereign master of all which is. In the soul of the world, intelligence and reason, which is the guide and the sovereign master of all, which is excellent, is Assar. Oh, and then he gives what page and. I wanna say I think this is in Greek or Latin, one of those, but he goes on and. Yeah, right here. So, um so in fact. The indivisible essence is the soul of the world, while the divisible essence is the body of the universe. And I'm like, oh my gosh, this is one of those things that I'm always like, oh, this is why I love being comedic, because then I think about science. And I think about how they say, like this god particle came and then we had the big bang and then. You know, it's that constant movement that constantly is making the the um universe continue to grow and expand and. You know, I I I think of something like that and again, it's this idea of. You have to have something, but also a reaction, it can never just always go one way. Like how, what is that thing in science? Energy never dies, it just, was it transfers? Like it's that same idea, like you, you just have certain principles, which again, that goes back to what I was saying earlier, like. There's just certain things that just exist that you can't change, period, no matter how much, so it's better to just respect it and go with it. Than to sit here and fight, but I digress. So this back and forth between uh Assar and Satash. And then he goes on to say, in fact, in Timaeus, the indivisible essence is a soul, oh, I said that part, sorry. So to sum it up for Plutarch, the whole discussion of Plato on the world comes directly from Kemet. It is for this reason valid in his eyes that Plutarch associates the philosophy of the Kometiu with that of Plato's. Which can be historically justified since Plato studied in Kemet with the priests. So Plutarch then analyzes uh Platonic philosophy in the light of comedic thought and then he gives page reference. So the relation between Kemet and ancient Greece are great. Of great importance, especially in order to understand primarily the birth and unfolding of Greek sciences and philosophies. And then he pretty much goes on and summarizes everything that we've literally been reading for the past five hundred years and a day. So he's talking about the etymology, he's talking about the sages, he's talking about um all the different Greeks that went and studied. Um and the different things that they studied or learned, um theology, geometry, astronomy, medicine, mysteries of life and death, cosmona-. Cosmonogy, uh cosmic harmony, the arts, morality and wisdom. Um and then he says where we specifically started focusing on these different Greek uh folks. Uh because whose their powerful works are still part of the education of the cultural consciousness of the whole Western world. So that's why he really, you know, just was repeating about, they got this per- important person to y'all, got it from here. That important force, uh that important person got it from over here, blase, blase, blase. So uh this is history and the correct history must be done with objectivity. Uh and a critical spirit. A true objective, critical history of Greek philosophy resil- reveals. Many of the roots in African philosophy, the late Sheikh Antedio. One of the greatest pioneers in the study of comparative histories and cultures emphasize this, now remember. Theofalo Benga is, you know, a a direct um student from him, so. Here we go, that's why he would say that, ah, look at that, it's chapter three, ah, so excited, I'm like, let me look at the time real quick. So since we we stop, we're right here, I'm gonna just stop us a couple minutes ahead. But just to give us a taste. I'm like, am I bugging? Okay, so chapter three, this is like so interesting cuz look at chapter three and then look at chapter four. But no lie, chapter three, just because he does a lot of language comparisons, I think that's why that one is so long. So chapter three is about genetic linguistic connections. So um essentially, okay, yeah, so he's talking about Hittite, he's talking about Greek Sanskrit, Latin. So it's what I would like to predict. Feel free to agree or disagree, what I would like to predict is that just like he kept saying or his whole argument and the other two essays. Were all about um. How the Greeks got it from Kemet and was really breaking it down and going into excruciating detail. Uh I think he's probably gonna do the same thing, just linguistically, so I would like to say that um. Hopefully next week, we will be able to get through chapter three pretty solidly and um. If anything, that means in two weeks. We can finish out the book, which no lie, this is the last chapter is literally why I bought this book. Male, female relations in ancient Kemet, so that is why I, you know, I was like, oh, let me, let me learn that, um and it's. It's nine pages, it's only nine pages, all that stuff about language and history, nine pages. So um, oop, I lost my page there, but um, there we go. So that is to say, it looks like not next week, but in two weeks, we will be starting a new book cuz clearly we're not gonna come on here. Well, no, let me not, there have been times when we 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 read only like three pages a night, so. It is a possibility, however, um I would like to say that maybe we would get through. This chapter and then be starting another book, so. Um I absolutely invite you all to please send DM a message or something like that about a book that you would like to. Uh read next go round, uh I am currently thinking about reading a book on one of the mythos. So um probably one of these two are what I'm thinking of, so that's, oops, okay, thank you. Sorry about that, so those two books are. What is it, Egyptian gods or gods of the Egyptians, the book of? Yeah, the gods of the Egyptians and then it's volume one and volume two, clearly we're not gonna read, uh you know, all of it. Uh or both of them rather, but I would like to switch it up and you know, do actual like wisdom text. So uh we just did like a secondary with multiple primary source um. You know, sources to back it up, but I would like to switch it up and maybe do a book about mythos. Um or literature or like actual papyrus or something like that, so if you all got any suggestions, feel free to let me know. Uh until next week, when I see you, just as a just kinda update. I have recently just updated my website. Uh the YouTube is now on ready rotation and new videos come out every Friday. Uh Friday night and then. Yeah, I think so too, or I hope so. Cuz I I always get a real kick out of reading the mythos because I really feel like. You know, it just gives so much for us to pull apart as opposed to like a scholastic. Uh or academic kind of a book, so um I I am hopeful. That um, you know, unless somebody else has has another idea, but um. So yes, new YouTube videos every Friday and uh pretty much. Study sessions and like study materials uh will be posted every Wednesday, every week, so. Uh just look out for that, in the meantime, we still have comedic living in the twenty first century, which is a group over at Facebook. Where we essentially just have different discussions and kinda just keep this going, so you can join us over there too. So until next week. I I don't know why I did that twice now, I feel like I did that last week too, my bad. Give yourself to Netra Daily, keep yourself to for Netra Daily and may tomorrow be as today, have an excellent weekend, stay safe.